Fifth Honolulu Liquor um Liquor Commission meeting. Going in we have going into straight into public hearing calling application number two one dash two 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 three one from Takira El Ranchero Capole, Mr. Gota.
Uh good afternoon, members of the commission Neil Gota appearing on behalf of Takaria El Ranchero Capole LLC. Appearing with me is Hector Garcia, he's appearing by phone, he was having problems with his internet uh but he is online by phone. We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you, Mr. Gota, Ms. Harai.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Commissioners, do we have any um questions for Mr. Gota and his client? Mr. Gota, I have just one question.
Uh Mr. Gota. Go ahead, Nancy.
Go ahead, Commissioner Min, go ahead.
Um so this is for change a category, right, where are you are you folks still using both sides of the you have that extra space on the side, correct?
This is actually a new application, not a change in category. So it's uh uh my client is taking over uh a space at Kamakana Alii, but it's a brand new application for a restaurant liquor license.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gota, the only question um that I have is for the outdoor area. Uh because the hours are until two o'clock AM on the weekends. Will there be any music at the outdoor area portion?
Uh music will be kept inside the premise, the to avoid problems uh you know uh this is a bigger space than his other restaurant in Waheva. And so it can accommodate all potential entertainment within the premise inside.
Very good, I'm glad to hear that, Mr. Gota, I'm glad that um your client found a bigger space where he can do the activities and the things that he wants to do. Okay, thank you.
Uh motion to approve application number two one dash two 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 three one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two one dash two 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 three one, all those in favor?
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried, application is approved, thank you, Mr. Gota.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh going into agenda item number two, application number two one dash two two eight six seven from Wellington Productions LLC.
Thank you.
Uh Mr. Shin Sato.
Hello, Commissioner Ms. Chair, Commissioner Ms. Greeni Shioka, authorized agent also appearing on behalf of the applicant, I believe. Uh the Nai Nai Nui Fakava is also appearing by uh video. Excuse me, member manager, Nai Nui is N-A-I. N-I-U Fakava is F-A-K-A-V-A. We have received investigator Fung's report, have no changes to it.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Motion to approve application number two one dash two two eight six seven.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the application number two one dash two two eight six seven, all those in favor?
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried, application approved, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number three, application number two zero dash two one four six four from Semi Sub Incorporated.
Yes, Curtis Jackson for Sumaso.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Jackson, this is for a tour operation?
Yes, ma'am.
Brief name, what kind of operation you have and how you intend to serve liquor?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear.
Uh can you briefly explain your operation?
Uh the vessel is a tourism vessel, hundred fifty hundred forty nine passenger. And um we serve uh meals and we serve breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and we'd like to serve alcohol.
And what's your capacity?
Hundred forty nine.
And how much staff do you have?
Um onboard is eight.
Any questions? Motion to approve application number two zero dash two one four six four.
Second.
It moved in second to approve application number two zero dash two one four six four, all those in favor?
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Min.
Ganabon.
I vote aye, motion carried, application is approved, thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Oh, thank you, God bless.
Okay, going into request, request number agenda item four, request number two one dash two two seven five one from PJ Honolulu LLC. Good afternoon, Mr. Ueoka.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the commission, Ms. Hori, Robert Ueoka on behalf of Tomkatsu Ginza Biden. Also present is Naoko Inoue, she is a manager, first name N-A-O-K-O, last name I-N-O-U-E. I am in possession of the licensing investigator's report, I have no changes.
Thank you, Mr. Ueoka.
Thanks to the C.M., Mr. Ueoka. Um perhaps you can provide us with some clarity on this request, we had some confusion about the bathroom area and the neighboring space, um perhaps you can help us.
Okay, that one is actually coming up on number five, this is number four addition of two ma- two managers. But happy to discuss the bathrooms, um I I did discuss the matter, I I was actually listening to the hearing last time. And I did speak to licensing on it, and they said that the bathrooms are not part of any license premises, so they can be added to the for the addition, um but it's yeah, that's like I said.
Sorry, that was my mistake, that's my mistake, Mr. Ueoka, I was on the wrong license, uh wrong agenda item.
No, that's fine.
All right, this is notification of new managers. Uh any questions, Commissioners? All right, uh motion to approve request number two one dash two two seven five one. You guys hear me?
Oh. Commissioner Miyashiro.
I glitched out, I I'm not sure um if it was just me, but I heard Mr. Ueoka about explaining the bathroom issue.
Um we're we're on agenda four and we're gonna reserve that um discussion for agenda item number five, there's a motion on the floor for approval for four right now.
Okay, I'm glitching then.
Get a second for um Commissioner Min's approval, please.
Yes, I I think I glitched again, but I'll second the motion to approve.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two seven five one, all those in favor?
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro. Ganabon.
I also vote aye, request is approved. Okay, calling agenda I um request number agenda item number five, request number two one dash two two eight five six for PJ Honolulu LLC, Mr. Ueoka.
Robert Ueoka on behalf of Tomkatsu Ginza Biden, also present is Ms. Naoko Inoue, um she's a manager. Um this is the matter that was been, I think this is the third time before the Liquor Commission, I was I I did hear the hearing last week um and I know there was a question regarding the bathroom. Um I did speak to licensing and they confirmed that the the bathroom in that extension area is not part of any liquor license premises. So it is eligible to be included in the extended area.
Um and so that will be a part of this licensee's license premises, correct?
Yes, on a temporary basis, temporary basis, yes.
Okay, um please make sure that we have the correct um floor plan on file, Mr. Ueoka.
Yes. I I just discussed that with um with licensing, so I I think everything's fine.
Okay, great, thank you, good to hear. If there's nothing further, Commissioners, uh motion to approve request number two one dash two two eight five six.
Second.
It moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two eight five six, all those in favor?
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
Also vote aye, request is approved, uh motion carried, request is approved, thank you, Mr. Ueoka.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Ms. Inoue, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number six, request number two one dash two two eight two five from Vita Mia LLC.
Hi, good evening, Andrew Porter, attorney for Vita Mia LLC.
I'm sorry, go ahead and spell your name.
Uh Andrew Porter, A-N-D-R-E-W P-O-R-T-E-R.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
I think the free screen yeah frozen here.
Actually, we can hear you.
Okay, great, um I actually uh I've been reading over the investigator's report and we do have some changes here. Um in the investigator's report, he noted was that you, okay, um he noticed that um his opinion is that the statutory requirements had not been met. Um because the applicant did not notify the commission within thirty days of the new member manager's appointment. The new member manager uh became through a closing on January eleventh, twenty twenty one um through the agreement, and um there's also an um error in the investigator's report that said that the application was received on February twelfth, twenty twenty one. Uh but it's actually file stamped February tenth, twenty twenty one. Um so now under uh section three dash eighty one dash nineteen point eight, the timing rules, that's exactly thirty days after the um transfer of membership interest.
Yeah, Commissioners, if I could just comment, so uh the the issue with respect to late notification will be before you in a separate adjudication proceeding. So um you'll probably need to limit uh re- a response to comments that Mr. Porter made.
Okay, Mr. Porter, we'll we'll go ahead and um any other comments as far as the investigative report or any 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 further? Commissioners.
I have none.
Okay, Commissioners, type of function?
A motion to approve request number two one dash two two eight two five. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you folks hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Motion to approve request number two one dash two two eight two five.
I think we lost Commissioner Miyashiro. We will hold momentarily, I believe he's dialing back on right now. So we can regain quorum, yeah, he's going in and out, so he'll be back in.
We only have three Commissioners, so we apologize, but we need to wait for Commissioner Miyashiro before we can approve.
I understand, thank you.
We're playing the weather. Oh boy.
There you go.
There you go. Commissioner Miyashiro, thank you for joining us.
Am I supposed to say second or what?
There's a motion to approve on the floor.
Is there a second, Mr. uh Commissioner Miyashiro?
Second.
Okay, um it's been moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two eight two five, all those in favor?
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Getting there.
Miyashiro.
There he is.
Aye.
He said aye, okay, Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried, um request has been approved, thank you, Mr. Porter.
Okay, um there was a machinaman adjudicative hearing, um is that?
You'll receive a separate notice, the the licensee or you will receive a separate notice when that matter is scheduled.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, calling agenda item number seven, request number two one dash two two eight nine six from Tahiti Chef LLC, DBA Brood Restaurant.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Troy Tero Tua, last name T-E-R-O-R-O-T-U-A. I am the uh managing member of Tahiti Chef LLC.
Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioners? Motion to approve request number two one dash two two eight nine eight nine six.
Second.
Oh, I think we lost Nancy. Are you there, Nancy?
Oh, okay.
Prove request number two. Sorry. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so where were we, I I know there was a first and a second, right? Did we get a second, okay, and we took a vote?
Not yet.
Okay, all those in favor?
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried, request is approved.
Thank you very much, have a great day.
You too.
Chair, motion for the adoption of findings of fact decision and order for agenda items eight through eighteen inclusive.
It moved in second to approve the adoption of findings of fact and decision and order for agenda items eight through eighteen. As previously circulated, all those in favor?
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Okay, we're going into adjudication hearings. Um calling agenda item number nineteen, Back Alley Cafe.
Good afternoon, Catherine Nesty, Deputy Corporation Counsel, appearing on the adjudication hearings today.
I'm sorry, hi. Uh I'm Linda Tai, this I'm representing Back Alley Cafe.
Can you spell your last name, ma'am?
T-A-G-A-I.
Thank you, Ms. Nesty.
On or about December thirty, twenty twenty, in the city county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter. To it, emergency order twenty twenty dash thirty one COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework, second amended and restated order implementing tier two dated December twenty third, twenty twenty, in violation of section two eighty one dash thirty eight of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Ms. Tai, how would you like to plead?
This is for the contact tracing? Sorry, did you say the twenty third? Sorry, okay, not guilty. Hello. I'm sorry, I'm kinda confused right now. So this is for the twenty third of December?
It is not.
And it is
Sorry ma'am, hold on, we're having some technical difficulties, if you can just hold on one moment.
Okay.
Do we know you back on?
Yes, my last was how does the licensee wish to plead, and then I froze out my screen. Last one.
Sorry, Ms. Tai, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Tai, how do you wish to plead?
Um
you can accept?
Not guilty? No.
Katie, could you uh please confirm the date of the violation, please, for uh the licensee representative?
Uh December thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Okay.
And I think you had a question about contact tracing and my answer, I don't know if you heard me, but yes.
Okay, uh yeah, I have the contract tracing and it shows
Ms. Tai, hold on, you you're gonna have to plead first, you either have to, yeah.
Oh, okay.
The last plea that you submitted is you wanted to plead not guilty?
Yes.
Okay, so you wanna set this aside for a contested hearing? Because if you plead not guilty, then we're gonna have to um we're gonna have to reschedule this for a contested hearing.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, since you have pled not guilty and wish to return for a contested hearing, there are a few procedures that the commission requires you to follow, yeah, so we're gonna
Sorry. Got.
Have to go through that still.
Uh can we, I think we should, I think we should take a short recess to discuss how we're gonna continue, because it looks like there's several people, including Chair Ganabon, who's having technical difficulties, can we have a short recess, please?
Yep. Cancel.
Or do we need to go to an executive session, Ms. Harai?
Um yeah, everybody is online now for this instant. Um uh if you up to you, you can either uh ac- actually, if you're gonna be discussing matters that are before you, you probably need to do it in exec.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
It's been moved in second to convene into executive session, all those in favor?
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried right now and it's in executive session. To convene into executive session, uh Ms. Harai um point of order, due to technical difficulty and quorum issues that there's just three Commissioners here, um we are having some problems communicating as well as communicating with the licensee, so um we would like to continue all adjudication hearing matters for today. Do we need to take it up on each item number four, can we lump it for the entire? Can we lump the whole adjudication, like the whole agenda item matters?
If you will identify um the num- the agenda numbers that are subject to that you wish to have continue to the next available date, I believe they can be disposed of that way. So you would need to say, for example, uh agenda items nineteen through twenty twenty seven inclusive will be continued to the next available date.
Ms. Nesty, do you have any objection to continuing today?
No, I have no objection, and I can work out um the dates um with the licensees and our staff.
Okay.
Right, a motion to continue agenda items nineteen through twenty seven inclusive to the next available date.
Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda items nineteen through twenty seven to the next available date, all those in favor?
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye, motion carried. Okay, uh moving on to agenda item number twenty eight. Um appointment of co-vice chair person. Uh Ms. Harai, sorry, for this agenda item, it as chair, am I allowed to make that motion?
Well, basically um all you're doing is announcing the appointment of your co-vice chairs for uh the the remainder, I guess the balance of this calendar year.
Okay.
So it would, it's just an announcement.
Okay, just um for clarification purposes, I know that um I'm just serving as an interim, and under that interim, it was um appointed previously as myself as well as Commissioner Min to serve as co-vice chair under Chair O'Donnell previously. Um Commissioner Min will continue to serve as co-vice chair, however, I would like to also have Commissioner Darren Lee, Commissioner Lee also appointed as a co-vice chair as well. Although he is not present today, um I'm sure he's enthusiastic about accepting as a co-vice chair appointment, so um that is the announcement.
I mean, if if you wish to make it uh that appointment co-terminate with your term as interim chair, you you can also do that, or otherwise it would probably just go to the end of the year.
Um whatever whatever is the commission's pleasure, whatever whatever suits it, I mean, basically, I I would assume that the easiest would be just to appoint again the next subsequent year for all. Again, just so we didn't, you know, so we don't fall upon a terms since the next January again and seek um reappointment again for chair as well as um vice chair as well. Is that okay?
Yeah, that that would work, I mean, because the uh the term of chair goes uh the calendar year. So at the end of the of twenty twenty one, uh the term of interim uh chair would expire, there would be an election for the chair position. And then at that same meeting, you would uh the person who is elected chair would be able to make the co-vice chair appointments.
Okay, well, if if there's no objection and like with the fellow Commissioners here, then I would like to have it just simultaneously, so it just we just do it again in January again.
I agree with that.
Sounds good.
Okay, um agenda item twenty nine, any legislative update?
Um just very briefly, uh we are uh working hard to make sure that uh House bills one thirty six and one thirty seven uh get heard by Senator Baker's committee, so it can continue to move in this session, that's all I've got.
Okay. And uh agenda item thirty, any admin matters?
Uh nothing from me.
Okay, hearing done, meeting adjourned, stay dry, stay safe, everyone.